Let's see what I got here. Good evening, everyone.
I think I do. I'm just trying to get in now.
Thank you for joining us for our May 6, 2025 York City Council meeting. At this time, we will have public comment. As a reminder, all public comments are limited to five minutes each. First up, we have Matt Jones. Thank you.
Oh, this worked? All right. So I'm here because of the barricades on George Street. And this just happened, or at least came into my life just a little tiny bit ago. My wife and I own Plant Box Co. right on the corner, Philadelphia, you know, right there, across from the Pell Center. And so that quickly became apparent that there are concrete wall now in York, which you drive into it. So I'm sure others will speak to some of the, maybe the pros and the cons of it. I, I just kind of wanted to look at it from a numbers perspective and, and think through it from a use of space. You know, in an urban environment, we have a situation where we have to use the space as well as we can, but we also have to think about it in terms of when that space is being used. So the time factor of that space as well, and it is a street. So I think we need to start with that in mind. It's a road. So roads are typically used for vehicle traffic and other vehicle purposes. And it's been turned into a space that's only being used for seats. Yes, I don't know how well this thing works. All right, does that work better? So any rate, some simple math related to this particular scenario is that there are 365 days in a year, there's 24 hours a day. So if starting with that baseline of 8,760 hours in a year, this is very simple stuff because I want to accomplish is I want to get to the point of how much use is the space actually going to be done. So knowing that, if you figure on an on-season, right, people sitting outside, an on-season is probably going to be about five months, two and a half months at the beginning of the year, two and a half months at the end of the year. So I'm going to go with five months, 30 days in a month, 24 hours a day, works out to 3,600 hours, which is 41% of the time that that space could be used. Furthermore, we have to consider that the operation days of the week of the restaurants is probably six, right? So we lose a seventh of that. So now we're down to 33%. Furthermore, we have to consider that the hours of operation are probably not 24, right? So now we're down to maybe a noon to 10 type of operational period. So that's 10 hours a day. So that takes us down to 14% or only 1,200 hours out of the given year. And furthermore, we have to consider, I think it's reasonable to consider that weather is a factor outside. So inclement conditions may arise such as today, right? I would put this in the on-season factor, but it's been raining most of the day during that period. Now, the sun's out now, so that could change. So I threw, this is where it gets a little fluffy, right? I threw 75% good weather, a factor of 25% negative weather affecting it, to farther reduce that down to 900 hours a year or 10% use factor. So we've just turned a space that is used for streets, for roads, for, for cars, for Uber, for Lyft, for pickups, even for curbside, for the restaurants, for unloading and loading. We've limited all that down, that can be used 100% of the time, down to 10% used for street, a street to be used for chairs and tables. So then I thought, okay, from a restaurant perspective, which we are one, so that's why I looked at it this way. What does that work out to me for revenue purposes? So real simple, five tables per spot. Let's pick a rate, $75 per table ticket, and let's figure on a rate of turn of an hour and a half per table. So if you do that, that works out to 900 divided by 1.5, which is only 600 table tickets a year per restaurant. But that's if they're entirely full all the time, right? So you have to consider that there's a percentage where they're not going to be full all the time. So I threw a 50% rate at that, which is pretty high for the restaurant industry. So that reduces down to 300 table tickets on average per year, per restaurant, on Restaurant Row, multiply 300 by $75 a table ticket, works out to $22,500 a year. Now, to think about that from a cost perspective, on whether that helps or hurts a restaurant, that's only $1,875 a month, and that works out to $25 an hour. So the restaurant owners are most likely going to be going through this exercise, and that's a really tough number to work with, your expenses to operate such a space with your waitstaff at only $25 gross per hour. So like I said, there are some numbers in here that I took the liberty of estimating, and then there's some numbers in here that are completely factual. You can't change them. So that was my point I just wanted to make was how the numbers break out and use of space and what the restaurants could potentially be earning from this space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brina Williams-Jones. As you just heard, my husband, we are the owners of Plant Box Co., York's only house plant cafe. We have two restaurants. One is located in Manchester Township and one is here in downtown York. We are the new kids on the block. We've only been here for six months, but our business has been around since 2020. Part of our core values, a little bit more about our business, as you heard, my husband, he is the number side of things. I am the marketing and PR professional. I have 12 years in marketing and public relations. I have worked with Google, with People Magazine. I'm a USA Today bestselling author, just to give you some background knowledge of why I'm going to be speaking on the messaging side of things. A little bit about Plant Box Co., like I said, we've been in inception since 2020. We are a pandemic baby project. I retired from my previous position after selling my previous company in 2020. And retiring at 30, I thought was going to be great, and I got bored. So here we are. Plant Box really started as my business. Matt has since come on board as our CFO. He left a lighting retrofit company, which is why environment is so important to us and part of our core values as our business. Like I said, I'm going to be speaking about the messaging side of we build walls. We don't, you know, build roads here in York, which is what it felt like when I walked downtown. We are right near Restaurant Row. We are just hop, skip, and a jump away. We are right next to the Philadelphia Street Garage, if you have not been into our place of business. We are a women-centric business. We have 14 young women who work for us. It is vitally important to Matt and I that we instill skills in young women that they can take with them onwards in their careers, or some of them have chosen to grow with us and stay in the hospitality industry. Matt and I will always tell you that we are hospitality first. We are a hospitality company that happens to sell coffee. Because of that, one of our core values is really meeting people where they are. So when I walk down the street and I see a wall in our city, and I say our city, I might not be a city resident currently. I am previously, my husband and I started our relationship in the city. I was a teacher at York City School District for 10 years prior to becoming a business owner, which I have been since 2015. So I do say our city. I'm not just a business owner. I am, you know, very much involved in our city community. It's vitally important to us as business owners, as well as us as a couple, to meet people where they are and be part of the community. We are looking at a situation, which I think some people would say it might be time to read the room. Building a wall, especially in today's political climate, might not be the messaging that we want to provide as a city. We are restaurant owners. We reached out to the owners of Restaurant Row to let them know that we'd be speaking tonight because it is not a personal attack on their business. If anyone is given an option to come up with perhaps a higher profit margin, although as my husband just said, it not necessarily the numbers work out, of course, they're going to gravitate towards it. However, I want it made clear, because when I've reached out to the mayor's office with my concerns, the first email that I received back was a copy paste, and it did not alleviate any of my concerns whatsoever and included typos. From there, I then can continue to push, and I asked some very specific questions, all of which I have forwarded you this evening, so that way you could see the mayor's response. Because like I said, I'm really going to be talking about messaging here. But one of the other things I did want to mention, as someone who has been recently disabled and temporarily disabled, I was in a wheelchair for six months last year. Having anything that could have our EMS take longer is a significant problem, which I'm sure you are all very well aware of. So one of my first questions to the mayor was, how does this impact traffic? Can we see a traffic study? And if you would like to open up your email, feel free. I also have the quotes here from the mayor's office, just because I wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page. He said, and I quote, "This in no way could interfere with the normal flow of traffic," and quote, "No traffic study was needed because this does not affect the driving lanes or the turning lane." I stood down there on the corner. I can tell you it definitely affects that turning lane. I heard, it was a beautiful day on Friday when they were done. So I listened to people with their windows down, unsure if they could turn onto Philadelphia Street at all, which of course, my business being on Philadelphia Street was a high concern. My employees as well were unsure if they could turn onto Philadelphia Street. And then once you do, zoop over and get into that right turning lane, there is now only room essentially for one car. If you are a sedan and you are short, you cannot see over those barriers. So we do have to worry about pedestrian safety as well. Moving on to, public roads shouldn't be used for private businesses. I operate in 772 square feet, and I'm very proud of it. But that is what I pay for. I don't get to use public sidewalk because again, ADA compliance is extremely important to us as someone who was temporarily disabled. And I know that I can't fit a table in front of my shop here. It's unfortunate. Our audience would love that, but we couldn't do that. And one of the things that the mayor said to me was that I should have, when I asked if restaurants, because this was setting a precedent, that restaurants would be able to do this, he indicated that he believed that I would want this. Let me make it very clear. Plant Box Co. does not want walls. We do not want anything like this in front of our business. This does not speak to our audience. It doesn't speak to our core values, and it is not something that I would consider a profitable idea. Additionally, he really spoke to the fact that this was a COVID-related incident, that because they have not rebounded since COVID, there are literally dozens of other businesses in our city that perhaps haven't bounced back since COVID. We've all felt the effects of COVID. We are not applying this to everyone, so setting that precedent is a dangerous precedent to set. It says, these are our favorites in accordance with the city. This is who gets to do this. What's, I'm not here because this is what I want for my business. I'm here with a sense of justice. I'm here speaking for small businesses. When the, the parking went to $2 in the evening, I wasn't in business downtown yet, but I sat right there in that same row to support the other restaurant owners that that would affect. Because it's about we, it's not about me. It's not just about our business of Plant Box Co., it's about the city itself. Other things that I have noticed the public speaking about, that we build walls is a sentiment online, I'm sure as you have seen today. Curb appeal. I'm a millennial, grew up with HGTV. There was never a time that you saw one of those shows that they didn't say curb appeal is your number one. If I was an owner on Restaurant Row, I get, I'm right around the corner, I would say that our curb appeal is something that you are paying for there. You are paying a premium to be one of those beautiful facades, which you now, if you are in a city, can no longer see. Other public comments included, it looks like they're preparing for a riot, not exactly the messaging I think we want, and no one wants to sit by fumes of cars, which I would completely agree with. At that price point, there's no way I want to do that either. I'd rather take a picnic in one of our beautiful local parks. In addition to that, messaging has continued to be a problem from the mayor's office, which I have continued to dialogue with him about. For example, he said that there is no cost to taxpayers. However, in the next sentence, he said, "This is a city project constructed by City Public Works." Those two things don't work together. He also said that it did not require any permits or drawings. I can't imagine that was the case, considering when we put our restaurant in, we were required to have engineered drawings for a P-trap. If you don't know what a P-trap is, it's part of your sink. So if we had to have engineered drawings for that, I can't imagine that putting up a concrete barricade doesn't require engineered plans.
Brina, do you want a minute?
No problem, thank you. I also mentioned that, I'm actually on my last point, so it's perfect. I also requested a communication plan be presented to the merchants and other business owners downtown, because when we were dialoguing about the parking situation, he said in a public forum that he would be including merchants and business owners in future conversations. His response to that was, if you'd like, you can feel free to share this with them. And lastly, on a personal note, he also mentioned that, quote, "You have may seen this in many other cities if you have traveled to other cities." I don't think in communication with our constituents, we shouldn't be making any type of assumptions about their business or their person. I'm actually extremely well-traveled. I haven't seen any types of concrete just like that. Just to enclosure, I really thank you for your time. Again, I think the city is a wonderful place to have a business, and I really think that if we can increase our communication and really make things better for the city as a whole, we are, we are doing what's right by the constituents and by the city members. In communication, they did say that a press release had been sent out last week. It was sent out at 6:38 yesterday evening. So again, communication and messaging has to be at the forefront of what we do. It is as business owners, I'm sure it is as officials as well. So we need to hold our elected officials to that, and additionally.
Thank you, Brina.
Thank you so much.
Up next, we have Roth Prep.
Hello.
Hello.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Roth Prep. I am a resident of the city. I grew up here in the city as well and grew up on the West 500 block of West Princess Street. I went to William Penn Senior High School. I've worked in the city. I worked for countless nonprofits. I work for a nonprofit in the county currently. And so I really wanted to come here today to talk as my experience as a resident, as I live right now on Duke Street, as well as my experiences as I worked in one of those restaurants for outdoor dining as well. So as a resident, I understand the outdoor dining was initially introduced during the pandemic to provide a safe way for people to dine outdoors while supporting local businesses, particularly those on George Street. However, this current solution that has been concocted by the mayor falls short of meeting these original goals. While efforts to improve the space are planned, the outdoor dining area still relies on basic cement blocks as barriers, and these areas haven't been fully beautified yet. I've seen in countless comments that he says that it is up to the businesses to beautify that area as well. So they were dropped with blocks, and now they have to spend more funds and money to then beautify the space that he created. Even with future plans to enhance the aesthetics, it feels like putting lipstick on a pig. It doesn't change the fact that the diners are seated next to heavy traffic and exhaust fumes. I also brought the question that there is no traffic plan, studies, assessments, quantitative or qualitative data that has been shared to substantiate this effort. Also, one thing that was very alarming to see is that business owners online were commenting, saying that they paid for this initiative through gift cards. And it's upsetting to hear about businesses being placed and pushed to pay for more things for this initiative. I've also observed how challenging it is for drivers to turn right onto Philadelphia Street from George Street. And I added, the added congestion from outdoor seating has only made it worse. The mayor raised concerns about safety for occasional outdoor dining events, particularly for safety vehicles and ambulances. But with the current solution that creates daily traffic jams and blocking of a full lane on George Street, somehow that seems to be a better alternative. This could potentially hinder emergency response times and create more obstacles for traffic flow. On First Friday that happened recently, the sheer number of tables crammed in such a small space made it difficult to navigate. For people with mobility challenges, this isn't just an inconvenience, it's a serious barrier. If the intent behind this initiative is truly about safety and accessibility, these issues should have been addressed before moving forward with what feels like a patchwork solution. Furthermore, the issue of fairness has come up, and that was in his response in his post online. But if fairness is the goal, why is George Street now excluded from a full street closure that occurs on First Friday when other streets like Beaver and King Street are fully closed for their events? It seems that the concept of fairness is misapplied here. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Young.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Young, and I've been a resident of York County since 2023, and I moved to the city last year. I live right on George Street at 118. I'm right between Rockfish and Bloom. My building does not contain a restaurant, just apartments and a private business. I'm coming here speaking tonight as a resident. I also work in the city. I work in tourism. So all of the points that have previously been brought up do seriously affect how I am able to work for the city. You know, I'm upset at this attempt for the on-street dining. The residents of this block were not notified. I never received a piece of mail. I never received a piece of email. I woke up one day to the noise outside of my door with the warning signs to not be parking out front. I don't think it's right that the concrete barriers completely block the loading zone that is directly in front of my building. I had my car temporarily parked there, received a ticket one time. That was my fault, but now that's not even an option, right? And I do live with a physical disability. I may seem able-bodied right now, but it is something protected under the ADA. And I use that loading zone to unload my groceries weekly. And I temporarily parked there, and then I moved to the place where I park my car normally. I don't have the physical capability to haul heavy bags as far as I have to park away from my building. And you know, they do make it hard to use the sidewalk for wheelchair users, like that has been brought up. It is a serious concern. I used to work in the disability advocacy space, so I'm very bothered by that as well, having to navigate between the tables, the people, the servers. You know, God forbid you accidentally walk into a server. Everybody would feel bad. In a Facebook comment, Mayor Helfrich stated that they would not close George Street due to it being a main route for emergency services. But what's the protocol if I need an ambulance or a fire truck in my building? It's now completely blocked. You can't even get in the inside of the barriers because of one of the barriers that goes up onto the sidewalk on both ends. I also have new neighbors moving in above me, and they're going to have to now cross traffic if they bring a U-Haul in, whereas we used to be able to use a U-Haul right in that loading zone out front. And you know, I know that there are unique challenges to living downtown, and sometimes you don't have direct access to your building, but this is a place where we did have the access. I don't think that my property managers were notified of this. They weren't able to tell us about this. The city did not notify us of this. And it's a very prohibitive change to the residents of George Street. And there are at least 10 apartments above Bloom, as well as the three in my building and more along that corner. I've seen so many of us use that area at one point or another to unload children, unload items, groceries, unload, even dropping off elderly patrons to these restaurants. You know, if they parking, you know, there's not enough spaces across the street or in any of the lots, and it's a serious concern. When we're talking about the revenue, I know people that are now saying, I'm not going to go to those restaurants because I can't drop them off. I can't park right out front like I used to. And as far as that parking goes, I work with motor coaches who come to visit. I work with Rockfish. They said, yes, of course, we want to bring motor coaches to our restaurant. We have a private dining space available. We can use our, what we're pickup spaces to park a motor coach. I can't do that anymore. So that takes away a significant restaurant. I don't know if you've ever tried to get a group of 50 people in one place for dining. It's a task, and I was really proud that York had so many options for people to dine in. I want people to be able to experience our downtown, but the one option that we have for an evening dinner has now been taken away. And as it's been, I'm just repeating now, nobody wants to pay the fine dining prices to eat against cheap, chipping away concrete in the middle of traffic. The night that they laid those concrete barriers down, we saw chips of it hanging down in the road. We picked them up and we're like, so this is the quality of this proposed solution that you are putting into the city? So who knows if a car runs into that, are they going to completely break apart? What's going to happen? So just thinking about the quality of the materials used for this proposed solution, I don't, I don't think it was well thought through. And you know, last year, I observed over the dining, outdoor dining season when George Street was closed, it was only closed on the weekends. So not only now have you put in a permanent prohibitive solution, that's there every day. I think a better solution would be to think about using that space with temporary barriers. I'm not saying the restaurants shouldn't have that space at all, but you have to think about everyone who uses that space. The people who are confused about the turning lane, the people who have to navigate those sidewalks, all the traffic. If you've ever sat through the traffic when the York Day Schools get out, you know it's a nightmare on George Street, and it's only gotten worse. I also submitted a formal complaint on the city's portal and received the exact response verbatim that the two previous speakers received. And I just want to leave it by saying, to not have your local government listen to what you say and make these decisions that aren't serving the general public for you is not what York should be about. And I love the city. I love being a resident, but this is very upsetting, and I don't think it was fully thought through. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Nicole. Do we have any other public comment this evening regarding non-agenda items?
Hello, my name is Sharif Hamid, York City resident. And I just, two quick things. Around July of last year, we had a huge fire out there on Albemarle Street in the 400 block. I'm not sure the name of the plant, but it's like an eyesore on that block. And I didn't see it, even though I'm on that block, but people told me they drove past there and bricks were falling out into the street. I didn't see it, but this was a pretty reputable person. So I'm just wondering when that's gonna, I know it can't be done overnight, but it's been almost a year now, and nothing has been done. It's just sitting there, and a lot of children go by there. I always care about the youth, so I have seen them, youth going past there and like they was inquisitive or something. So, so I'm just wondering when the rehab will start there. One other thing was, I'm wondering whether what Commissioner Maldro just did with the vape down, does that have anything to do with the legislation that's supposed to go through for the vape stores? Is that separate?
Yes, that is separate.
Okay, so legislation is still being worked on with that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening regarding non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Brian Gooden, and I'm here today because I believe our community deserves transparency, especially when it comes to how data is being used to shape the future of York City. First of all, I want to say that nonprofits are morally and legally expected to serve the underserved as their primary mission, not just enrich the already influential. If they don't, they may be violating the spirit and sometimes the letter of their tax-exempt status. Recently, organizations Downtown Inc. and York County Economic Alliance was approved by council to use Placer AI, a powerful commercial data tool that tracks foot traffic, behavior patterns, and even demographic insights across neighborhoods. But this is just the surface of Placer AI capabilities. So I wanted to ask the council first, do any, do the council members know or fully understand what Placer AI is, not just as a foot traffic tool, but as a system that collects behavioral and location-based data that influences development and investment strategies? Oh, okay. All right. So because I'm just trying to gain some understanding on, on this. So I'm just going to, Placer AI is a location analytics platform that provides insight into foot traffic, consumer behavior, and market trends using anonymized data, mobile device data. Placer AI claims to use anonymized data, meaning the information collected is not tied to specific individuals. So instead of tracking John Smith, for example, it tracks general movement patterns of people in an area. However, anonymized data does not mean harmless data. Even without names or phone numbers, pattern can, patterns can still reveal a great deal about neighborhoods, income levels, and demographic shifts. Placer AI is not just a data tool. It's actually a mirror and a map. It reflects how people move, live, and spend. But more than that, it shows where power wants to go to next. So imagine playing Monopoly, and the dice gives you the perfect move for the best property that everyone will land on the most every time over everyone else on the board, then you got Placer AI. In the wrong hands, it can gentrify York City in under five years. If you have ChatGPT, ask the question. Turning culture into capital and pushing out Turning culture into capital and pushing out the very people who built this community. It can strip away local identity, raise rent, and replace need with luxury. But in the right hands, it can help reduce poverty tremendously, increase opportunity, and invest in the people most often left behind. It could build economic justice, support local businesses, and guide policies rooted in real community data. So there's no need for me to ask, was it any equity or data privacy review conducted before allowing its use particularly, particularly for its impact on the black, brown, and low-income communities who are often targeted or displaced by decisions informed by tools and organizations like these? If city council allows organizations to use tools like Placer AI without any public policies, oversight, or safeguards, it risks perpetuating systemic racism intentionally or not. I remember me and Els was talking one time, and she didn't know systemic racism existed, and this is one of the ways that it do exist. Placer AI tracks behavior tied to location, income, race, and spending. Without equity-focused guardrails, it can easily be used to serve developers and affluent investors at the expense of black, brown, and low-income communities here in York City. Some cities across the country have begun to recognize the importance of regulating AI and data analytics tools to ensure they are used ethically and responsibly. I reviewed how other cities and states are beginning to take this seriously by implementing data privacy laws and creating safeguards to prevent misuse. York currently has no such protections in place. We should not be behind on this. These tools can help remove, rather than uplift, communities under the disguise of economic development. And so, speaking of systemic racism, it was something called redlining, and it was a discriminatory practice that was developed in the 1930s where they draw lines on maps. I'm sure, if you haven't heard about it, please look it up.
Brian?
Right?
Yeah, one more minute.
All right. So today is something called digital redlining, and that's the modern version where data, algorithms, or digital tools like Placer AI are used to exclude or deprioritize certain communities for service. So we ask in council to establish oversight and regulation, require nonprofits and city partners using Placer AI to report how their actions serve at least 65% of the underserved communities, since the very tooth of what a nonprofit is, is to serve the underserved communities. Prioritize equity in every dataset. If we collecting data on our people, it should not benefit, it should benefit our people, not just profit for them. Put community at the center of every decision. York's future should not be decided by invisible tech and private rooms. It must be shaped by the people who live here, work here, and dream here. So city council should not, should immediately stop or pause all use or data collected using Placer AI. Set a community-based committee to oversee all data collected on our community. This ain't about opposing technology, it's about fairness, transparency, and making sure powerful tools aren't used quietly to reshape our neighborhoods without our consent. If we're serious about equity, we need to act now before irreversible damage is done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment this evening regarding non-agenda items? Okay. We'll call our legislative meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bub?
Here.
Johniskew?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And everyone that can stand, please stand.
Hi.
Hi.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we will take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve our April 15, 2025 legislative meeting minutes, as well as our April 23, 2025 committee meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? That moves forward. Up next, we have presentation, awards, and announcements this evening. We have David Gonzalez here with the York County Economic Alliance to give a brief update on York County Economic Alliance's economic action plan.
Thank you, members of Council, for having me here today, and members of the public as well. As noted, my name is David Gonzalez with the York County Economic Alliance, also a proud City of New York resident as well for the last five years. I'd like to dive into the economic action plan, but I'll kick it off first with a brief overview of the YCA for anybody who's not familiar. The York County Economic Alliance is the hybrid organization of both the Economic Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, and we also host Downtown Inc., which is York's Main Street Group. We also host several county authorities as well that all serve on the purpose of economic development and some programs. For the purpose of my presentation today, we're talking about the York County Economic Action Plan. EAP, as I'll refer to it from here on out, is the 10-year economic competitiveness plan for the county. It was adopted formally in December 2020, and then began implementation in '21. In that process of the development of the action plan, we've engaged about 2,000 stakeholders countywide through surveys, through interviews, through public engagement opportunities as well in 2020, to then develop what is listed out in front of you of seven key focus areas of the plan itself. Everything from future of industry, workforce development, entrepreneurship, equity and economic mobility, quality of place, infrastructure in the built environment, and rural economy, all factors that contribute to the economy here in York on the daily. It's about 142 action items spread across 82 pages. If you're looking for some light reading, I'm happy to share the link to the plan later today. But on the brink of it all, too, we're focused on what it's going to look like to make York economically competitive in the long term and sustainable in that prosperity. Likewise, for the EAP, it has those action items call on opportunity for implementation, facilitation, and direction, on a whole host of opportunities as well, leading towards the development of reports and studies, takes of the overall entrepreneurial environment, and leading a host of data opportunities as well to kind of provide clear insight on what's going on here locally in York County. Development of some programs like the York County Trail Towns program, also a directive of the EAP, which focused on raising the profile of the economic, outdoor economy, rather, here in York. And that's everything you can imagine, that's hiking, biking, recreating at large, and also encouraging our residents here to adopt those spaces as well, making sure that those spaces are accessible for everybody, and they're serving the purpose in the broader community. The implementation is tracked each year in its progress. The report is available online, and I'll share that at the end of the presentation as well. But just so you know, that there's a report that happens each year, and part of the five years also looking at the impact of that, and I'll dive into that later in the presentation. Some of the initial outcomes of the housing, of the EAP, I'll list out here in the next few slides, one of which is being a housing study. That was an opportunity to conduct a needs and conditions assessment on housing at large, and really opportunity to work through the anecdotes of what housing looks like in York. That's everything you can imagine, the stability of our residents to access housing, renter, owner-occupied units as well, single family, as you can imagine. Likewise, we convened about 50-plus housing partners in that space, developers both in the public and private space, nonprofits, employers, government officials, real estate, mortgage brokers, the whole gamut. I won't go through all the key findings, but I'll address them, a few of the top priorities here that came through the housing study as well. Nearly half of our renters and more than a quarter of all households are deemed cost-burdened in York County. That means these are individuals who are spending more than 30% of their household income just on housing. That's just rent, that's just mortgage, that's not including utilities, that's not including insurance, and just the overall cost of living that we know is increasingly going up. Median household income in York County has increased by 24% since 2011, but median home prices have increased by 131%. And that goes to the adage that, again, wages are not keeping pace with inflation, and especially that's true with housing as well. And the last point I'll hit here, 30% of residents aged 20 to 34 are neither homeowners or renters. That's both on the sense that individuals are not having their names on mortgages, or likewise, they're not having their name on leases. That's creating a significant barrier for economic opportunity here in our community at large, and just for the gateway that usually homeownership provides to economic prosperity. What's next in that plan is that we've developed an action agenda that's addressing a lot of those key findings through the housing study with these partners that I outlined previously. Entrepreneurship is another goal that is focused in on the EAP. There's a call-out specifically that works on the boost, boosting of the number of entrepreneurs countywide. That's creating a proper funnel for individuals to start their own businesses here in York and sustain themselves. Enter a program that we started through this, it's called the Bloom Business Empowerment Center, which is also enhancing technical support and also offering opportunities for access to capital, and just building a culture of entrepreneurship here in York County at large. So a lot of that is focused on accelerating small business ownership, and also promoting other opportunities for economic opportunity, be it through pathways to workforce development and talent development at large. So individuals who want to upskill themselves, individuals who just want to approach different career paths, four-year, technical, what have you, that's also the skill set that's coming through the center as well. And last is also representation and leadership and access to opportunities, so calling the opportunities that individuals that make decisions for resources over committees, boards, what have you, or represent, are representative of the community they serve. So there's a lot of factors come to date, I won't belabor some of the points too, but one high point I'll hit is that through the inception of the Bloom Business Empowerment Program, $648,000 has been awarded to businesses throughout York County. Since the launch of Bloom, we've granted about $403,000 to 151 small businesses just in the city of York. And another outcome of the EAP is early childhood education. We have a direct focus on, in the economic action plan for that. Part of that's focusing on removing the barriers of employment. Childcare is listed as one of those key factors. Point in parcel here for this issue is that in York County, in 2020, we had about 220 early childhood centers countywide. As it's 2023, we had 170. We had a gap of about 4,000 childcare spots throughout the county, and we see that as a significant barrier. Families can't go to work, parents can't work, rather, and the issues kind of magnetize from there. So we developed the Every Child Has Opportunities Initiative, both to create new programs and also help sustain successful ones, and likewise, with the goal of expanding access to early ed seats to at-risk youth at large. Work to date is that we've awarded about $1.9 million through this program, both for startup centers, think of home-based providers and also center-based providers, and then innovation grants. So there's opportunities for established centers to add new amenities or to add new features to their offerings. And likewise, teacher aid funding. We can't have early ed without the teachers to do, to do the work. And if you know the numbers of what it looks like to get an early educator into different spots, it's treacherous. So we found opportunities to help support about 52 educators to date, with $261,000 awarded across the spread there. So out of the five-year progress review, this is really an opportunity to reflect and refresh the economic action plan. We're at the midpoint now, so it's an opportunity to update data. Obviously, data has developed over that time period, so local, state, nationwide, we're trying to factor all those in. Retool components of the plan, ensure the next five years are reflective of what the community needs in the long run, and then nudge for heightened attention to some of the focus areas that haven't received enough attention in that process. Some of the preview of the data that we've tracked to date is that we've seen an increase in birth rates in businesses, which is something we need desperately. York County, York City at large are lagging behind the Commonwealth average, and then also the nationwide average, so we found this opportunity to see that trending in the right direction. Likewise, job creation rate increased, we want to see more jobs, and opportunities are providing families sustaining wages. So we've seen about 7.4% increase, and that's on par with the data that we're hearing, that there's about 5,000 job increase by the end of the decade. Likewise, female-owned businesses are on the growth, are on the upswing at 4%. That's also on par with female, females are also graduating with college degrees and are faster than men as well. 12% decrease in cost-burdened households. While that is reassuring to see that, you ask anybody who is a cost-burdened household, they will tell you a different story. So again, there's still factors that we have to continue to address that. So the progress review goal, ultimately, it's updating data reports that we have. So the data that we had in the original economic action plan in 2020, taking factoring in local, state, and nationwide data to update it, conducting interviews with key countywide stakeholders to provide those initial insights and raise areas of interest that we haven't addressed quite yet in the next five years. And likewise, those opportunities for the public to have engaged, that's why these opportunities to present in front of municipal entities is definitely something we're looking forward to. And developing an impact report, so sort of a summary, sort of saying, in these last five years, this is what we did, and this is what the impact has caused. And that would be a summary document, again, available on our website as well, and dismantled throughout the community. Develop an update for the current plan. So again, inclusive of the goals and metrics and measurables for success. So one thing we want to make sure is that there's clear indicators of what we're doing, and making sure it's actually creating some tangible success. So that's one thing we want to make sure for certain, and then the five-year update, that's what we'll be able to see. And that'll translate into a developed community dashboard that'll be public, again, on the website to track the progress, and again, report it out to see how those metrics and indicators are developing. I know we have other items on the agenda today, so that's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any, or after the rest of the council meeting. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, David. Is there any comments or questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Better head, remember.
At this time, our next legislative meeting for 12 noon on May 14. Council committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 28, 6:00 PM here in council chambers. All agenda items for that are due by 12 noon on May 21. We will move into subdivisions and land development and Harb. Up first, we have resolution number 30. So introduced.
Resolution number 30, introduced by Theresa Johniskew. It resolve that council hereby approves a certificate of appropriateness as recommended by Harb and the building inspector for work to be done at 127 North Broad Street.
Move for a vote?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this? Any public comment regarding this? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of bills and resolutions. We have final passage of bill number 10. Move for a vote?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this this evening? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
And that was a bill authorizing the inclusion of our 2024 ordinances into the codified ordinance book.
Bub?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Washington? I'm sorry, Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. For new business and introduction of bills, we have introduction of bill number 11. So introduce.
Bill number 11, introduced by Queen of Washington, amended in the fiscal year 2025 budget for the police department to fund vehicles, reporting software, video surveillance software, video conferencing device, a small drone, and overtime for the violence intervention team, in the amount of $420,000. Also for the fire department to fund duty officer vehicles in the amount of $334,509, and for the health bureau to cover expense of medical director in the amount of $115,491.
And that is the bill, and it will sit. Up next, we have introduction of bill number 12.
So introduce.
Bill number 12, introduced by Felicia Dennis, bill amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the highway bureau of the public works department by for the hybrid bureau of the public works department by appropriating money, money not otherwise appropriated, for fund 10 for bridge maintenance in the amount of $60,793.
And that is a bill, and it will sit as well. Up next, we have introduction of bill number 13.
So introduce. Bill number 13, introduced by Betsy Buckingham, a bill amending Article 1761, licensing and inspection of tenant-occupied residential and all institutional occupancies of the codified ordinances to establish requirements for local supervision of residential rental units and providing definitions therefore.
And that is a bill, and it will sit as well. Up next, we have resolution number 31.
So introduce.
Resolution number 31, introduced by Felicia Dennis. Okay, whereas the fiscal budget was approved to include $500,000 in ARPA funds for the purchase and installation of two single occupant public toilets, and whereas the city received a quote from Madden Fabrication in the amount of $349,450, now therefore be it resolved that council hereby authorizes an agreement with Madden Fabrication for the purchase and installation of two Portland Lou public toilets.
Move to approve?
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this this evening?
No, but I wonder for those in the audience tonight that, that weren't here for committee, if maybe Ms. O'Brien would like to, you know, speak to this, she's brought her demo with her.
Counsel, thank you so much for having me. Sarah O'Brien with Downtown Inc. Yes, we are so excited. I know you guys have heard this before, but public restrooms are the number one tourist destination in the world. They're also a necessary amenity for our citizens, and so we are thrilled and so very gracious the city allocated ARPA funding for the purchase of two Portland Lou's. I have a replica model here, if anyone would like to see it. These were designed by the city of Portland with the urban environment in mind, so there are a lot of features that allow for safety for those that use it, and so we're very excited to bring these. One's going to be going in Penn Park, near the basketball courts, and the other one will be catty-cornered from the history center across from First Cap on Pershing and Philadelphia in the Lafayette parking lot. Just some of the amenities for you guys to know, they are slatted, so you can actually have visibility from the right-of-way. They'll both be placed on right-of-ways where the police department and public works department can view them. They are graffiti-proof, they include blue light technology, which prevents intravenous drug use, and they also have a back door that's accessible by locking keys, so if for some reason there was an individual that had fallen asleep in there, or multiple users participating in any type of antisocial behavior, we'd be able to stop that. So we are very, very excited to bring this much-needed amenity to downtown York. The city crews are awesome, Dave has been a joy to work with. York Water and Pennsylvania American Water are currently working on the utility setups. With the approval tonight, we will place the order by May 15th, and hopefully get these in hand sometime this summer, and we will plan the biggest porta-potty ribbon cutting that you guys have ever seen. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have a comment, and you received my photo. I was up visiting Portland, Maine, my son lives there, and they have these throughout the city, and actually, right on Congress Street, you know, I saw one in use, you know, there are restaurants and shops all around, but you saw people going in and out, and people probably thought I was crazy taking a photo of my phone to send on. But I, I see a real need for that kind of facility, you know, for any busy city, any busy community where people can, you know, take care of an essential need. So I was really excited about it. In fact, Portland's having so long, they're updating and replacing them with the newer model, you know, but it's, I have not heard anything but great, you know, results, you know, from this, you know, facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comment?
Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment regarding this this evening? Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to get an understanding here. Did you say 500,000 for two of them? And, and is it one person stalls?
It's actually, it was actually not 500,000 for two of them.
That's sounding a little crazy.
$49,450 for two of them, but the remaining money is the, what was it, the installation?
Yes.
And how much money put to the side to, who, who, who?
This is ARPA funding.
Who maintains them?
Dollar, this is ARPA funding.
I know, but who maintains them later?
Public Works.
Public Works.
All right, so we pay for that too. And damn, so 400,000, 500,000 for two toilets? That just sound, that don't sound a little crazy? I just thought it sounded a little weird. 500,000 for two toilets? I mean, how are we comparing ourselves to Portland, Maine? That city is a lot bigger than we are, and I'm sure they worth a lot more money than us, but 500,000, it sounds, it sounds a little outrageous for two toilets. I'm just, that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Sure, yes, sir.
I do agree, like, from someone.
Say, I'm sorry.
Oh yeah, my name's Dylan, I live in the city, I actually.
Dylan what?
Sautter, S-A-U-T-T-E-R. I live in the city right next to the Central Market, and I also work in the city. I do agree that we need some public works down here. I work for an organization who serves the unsheltered in York, and a lot of them have nowhere to go when they're moving from shelter to shelter, or from safe place to safe place, and I think it's going to be a good, a good thing to have down here, but the, the number does blow my mind a little bit as well, I must say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding this this evening?
Yes, again, my name is Nicole Young, and while the number does seem high, and while I think a lot of our residents may not necessarily see the value that the tourism industry brings into York County as a whole, take a look at the Explorer York annual report, I think you would be surprised at the amount of money that tourists spend while they're here, and the amount of money, or the amount of people who come through York. You know, we're, we're a hidden gem in Pennsylvania and along the mid-Atlantic region, so I do think this is a really great idea. I am excited to tell people this is something we offer. You can't improve a space without spending money, and while I do, you know, there's a lot of work in certain parts of the city that needs to be done, and there are forgotten populations and forgotten streets and neighborhoods that I think deserve to have the type of beautification and just improvement that the main parts of our, our city and our county receive. I do think this is a step in the right direction, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding this? Yes, sir.
Gee, though, geez, I just want to say, I'm not against tourism at all, but, you know, it's, it's awful to live in a city who, who have these organizations who promote nothing but tourism, and invest in tourism, but will not invest in the people who may come in here, we're visiting in the first place. That's, that's the problem we have here, that's the breakdown in York County, in York City, period, in York. That's the breakdown. We don't invest in the people that's already here, the businesses that's already here. We want to invest on bringing outsiders in to show them that we don't love the people that we already have here, but we want them to invest in us and take care of us like it's their own. That just make no sense to me. That make no sense to me. If we know it's broken neighborhoods, broken youth, broken this, broken that, but, you know, we don't pump 400, 500,000 into that, or homelessness, any of that, we pump it into two toilets to bring, to make tourism a better stay. It's crazy, it's crazy. That just don't make sense to me, I just don't understand what a breakdown be, where, where all, all these certain organizations do is have to come up here and they automatically approved for anything, even without council even having knowledge, seeming like of certain things they approving, we just approving this stuff. Like, this is, this is starting to be a little troubling, if you ask me.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment? One of the things, I mean, these aren't right downtown, but certainly, you know, residents coming into city, but these, you know, Portland Lou's are actually being placed down on Pershing Avenue, where they'll probably be very helpful to our homeless population, and the other one's going up in Penn Park, which will be really good for the neighbors, you know, who use that park, the people, you know, in that area. So it's, it's not just, you know, a way to raise tourism in this case, the location I thought was very thoughtful for the city.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter this evening? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number 32.
So introduce.
Resolution number 32, introduced by Felicia Dennis, awarding a contract for dumpster and oil loss services to Casella Waste Systems, ESC Management Services, and Penn Waste in the amount of $184,199.40.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this this evening?
None.
Any public comment? Yes, sir. Yes, that's fine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lester Abbott from the east side, and a New York City resident for 35 years now. So I, I, I know what happened with the garbage, I'm fine with that and all that, no problem. I am a little confused here, and I just want to ask, just ask some questions. The recycling, I understand that was supposed to change on May 1st, but I accidentally put my recycling out on Monday, which is my normal day, and they took it. So I don't know if it was supposed to change this Monday, or this Thursday, if I'm supposed to put my recycling out again, so I'm, I'm a little confused about that, so. Should I put my recycling container out this Thursday again, or?
I can answer that question for you.
Oh, great.
So what I did ask with this new contract is to be lenient on our residents, to allow them time to adjust to the change, so they will be picking up. If you can't remember, you forget that you're supposed to put your trash out at the end of the week now, I just thought it would help with the change, and just adjusting to, you know, going to the end of the week instead of the beginning of the week. You're putting your recycling out at the end, but your refuse, which is your trash and your yard waste, if you have any, will be in the beginning of the week.
So the yard, the yellow containers are still on Mondays, and the green containers are now on Thursdays and Fridays.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Hey, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you Sapphire.
You're welcome.
Is there any other comment regarding this from the public?
I just want to say that thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for clarifying it, because I have had constituents and neighbors ask, ask the same questions, so that's great, that same, yeah.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the vote?
Ma'am?
Are you going to re-say something?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
That contract got awarded to Penn Waste, so I think when you read it off originally, you read it off as selling.
It had, actually, it had three names involved in that, that's what was.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's in, I think it was in the.
A lot of the resolutions. Three bids were received.
Okay.
Yeah. The Penn Waste won the bid.
Okay, all right.
To award a contract to Penn Waste.
Okay, because the resolution, okay, okay, I see it, I see it, yep, thank you.
Yes.
I apologize, ma'am, while I believe you had a comment.
That was it, actually.
Oh.
That's what happens when I cut corners and don't read the whole thing.
I have one thing just to say now that we are here, and people are having questions. Now that the weather is getting nicer outside, we are trying to put together something where we are outside of city hall, and while residents are coming through, and, you know, we want to, we want to help them and help them understand the new process or any change with our contract, so we are going to get together when the weather gets a little nicer, and just have all that information out there for them, whether the hybrid toller service, the change in recycling, large item, miscollections, so I'll be out there, we'll just kind of put something together where it's called trash.
I love it.
Me too.
Thank you Sapphire.
Yes, she's good.
No wonder India likes you so much.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Okay. Bub?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number 33. So introduce.
Resolution number 33, introduced by Queen of Washington, whereas the, what am I talking about here?
Reprogram.
Okay, reprogram. The thing seems like I was telling Brian something that was covered by ARPA funds, and I think I was, oh no, that was something else, okay, all right. Whereas the 2025 budget included allocation in ARPA funds for the reprogram initiative of the police department, and whereas the city drafted an agreement with reprogram in the amount of $196,300 to provide a therapeutic performance arts-based program for students that will supplement the York City School District after school programs for the 2025, 2026 school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is authorized to enter into documents for same with reprogram.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I believe we have Mr. Diaz Woodard here with us, would you mind sharing more about the reprogram? And Commissioner Mardro. You were hotting back there.
Doesn't matter. So, let me tee you off.
I'm gonna tee him off.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm excited, and it's my pleasure to be here today, tonight, speaking on behalf of the city in regards to this project, and that's why I wanted to tee him off. I almost feel like Brian was segue, segue, segwaying us a little bit, because this is a project that is an investment in our kids, in our families, in our schools, and in our future. I just want to start by saying, I think we can all agree, that this has been a long time coming, but we're here. This, what this actually means is this is a project that with a small ARPA investment will allow us to answer that age-old call to action, giving our youth something that they want to do, while supporting public safety through providing opportunity, supporting our schools, our families, and our youth, and challenging them while we're nurturing them and helping them be their best, and last but not least, helping our kids be seen as something more. To that end, I proudly stand here tonight, next to this young man, Diaz Woodard. If you know him, you know what he stands for. And along with his team, and the offerings that he's assembling that he'll tell you about, he's positioned to foster greatness in our kids, and great work in this community. And I'm so thankful for his work and his partnership that he's developed and created with Dr. Barry, to create a platform with this community's youth. We need what he brings, period. He may be a little nervous, but I'm not nervous to stand here and celebrate him and what the potential is in this program. It's going to be amazing in our schools, as he builds that connection and that confidence with our kids and our parents. And I know without a shadow of a doubt, that the impact that he's going to have in York City over the next few years is going to be undeniable. Next week, next year, and as we finally get the rec center doors open, and we transition that great programming that he's going to develop in the schools into our building, we know that that same energy and those same level of opportunities are going to come along with it and go inside, because it's not going to be good enough to open a good building without being able to offer great programming inside. So with that, it is my pleasure to finally be here today, and to be able to kick this off and introduce Diaz Woodard, CEO, founder, creator there.
I, I don't really know how to follow that. Good evening, everyone, my name is Diaz Woodard, I'm CEO of Reprogram York, which is a therapeutic performing arts-based enrichment program. At this point, I think that you guys pretty much have a lot of the background knowledge about the program. We've been working on this for about two to three years now. I've actually enlisted at least five enrichment providers that are local enrichment providers from the community that offer outstanding enrichments, as well as with the character education component to it. We are geared up to roll out as soon as we are approved and move forward. Right now, I have my MOU with Dr. Right now, I have my MOU with Dr. Barry with York City School District, which actually gives me access to, I believe, seven K through eight schools and their after-school programs. Typically, they register about 35 to 50 kids per school from throughout the summertime, as well as throughout the school, so we're thinking we're going to be servicing at least 400 to 500 kids throughout the next year or so. So I'm just really excited to roll this out to the community. Recreation is my passion, out-of-school time programming is my passion, and from my experiences, the biggest difference between a good program and a bad program is the quality of the program. So I'm hoping that with these funds, we can provide the best high-quality after-school enrichment programs for the city of York and moving forward. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question, just, will be certain days of the week, and what days of the week will they be, and I'd like to talk about?
Okay, so the, we have the opportunity to offer it every day of the week, but the purpose of our program is to supplement the spaces that the York City School District doesn't have programming. So they offer their after-school program Monday through Thursday, but the issue was they had gaps in their services because of them being an afford enrichment provider. So my goal is that when they start planning for their upcoming school year, that we're able to go in with their planners, figure out where their gaps and services are, and then supplement in there. That way, the kids will have a full, a full evening of enrichment programs, rather than like one or two, one week, and then two or three the next week, so that way you can offer consistency across the entire school district.
Thank you. Is there any other council comment?
Maybe you'd like to share what the summer program will look like? That's really exciting.
Yes, and well, the summer program, we're, it's, it's a similar concept. We'll be servicing for the, the summer school program. So right now, they haven't really rolled out this schedule yet of what it will look like. We're going to plan on doing a soft launch for the summer program, just to add some enrichments in there, but really want to do our biggest bang when the school year starts back, so we can be a part of like the beginning planning process, and, because we're a little delayed because of the timeframe of the contract, so.
Is there any other council comment regarding this? Any public comment? Madam clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have resolution number 34.
Real quick, Ms. Edquina, and, and real quick, while I'm, while I'm still standing up, I wanted to say happy birthday, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
So up next, we have resolution number 34.
So introduce.
Resolution number 34, introduced by Betsy Buckingham. Council hereby authorizes an agreement with PMA for, as part of Old Republic General Insurance Group for workers' compensation insurance effective May 1st.
Call for a vote?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this this evening?
I have none.
Any public comment? Madam clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. At this time, we do not have any requests for future meetings. Do we have any further council comment this evening? Ms. Councilwoman Buck?
Yes. Just a quick comment. I have been looking at the finances, and we've been having good conversations about where the city stands, and I just wanted to share that because we're behind in our annual audits, even though we just recently got the 2019 completed and presented, the state DCED, Department of Community and Economic Development, does not consider us for some of their grants. While our neighbors in Lancaster have been able to win over $9 million over the past three years in direct PA DCED grants, we are currently ineligible. I want to encourage the administration to prioritize the completion of the 2020 through 2024 annual financial reports and audits as a top priority. While we do not want to increase the budget, council can approve adjustments to it, and has in past approved the use of rollover funds, spending for additional help to complete the financial reports and audits toward this goal would make us eligible for these types of state grant funds, which would help in this environment. And I may speak on, on behalf of myself, we want to help, we want to work collaboratively with the administration and do whatever it takes to get our financial audits completed, get the financial information we need to the state, and improve the city, the quality of the finances for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buck. Any other further council comment this evening? Administration? At this time, our minutes adjourned, everyone.